Meeting will come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Stanger?
Here.
Councilmember Quinn?
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a forum.
I move for the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 2nd, 2014, and the Journal of the Meeting of December 3rd, 2014.
Second.
Are you doing both of them? Would you do them separately? Can you do them separately?
Sure. I move for the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 2nd, 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The Journal is approved.
I move for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 3rd, 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. The Journal is approved. I move to suspend the rules for the adoption and presentation of Resolution Number One, recognizing Ray Barnes, recipient of the outstanding contributions to county government, and Resolution Number Two, recognizing Katrina Summer as recipient of the outstanding contributions to Citizen Services Award.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Please read Resolution Number One.
Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Page, Wassinger, O'Meara, Dolan, Stanger, and Quinn, resolution, whereas the Employee Achievement Award for Outstanding Contributions to County Government Operations is awarded to an employee who has succeeded in accomplishing extraordinary improvements in the efficiency and economy of work processes which have led to cost avoidance, cost reduction, or improved productivity in county operations; and whereas Ray Barnes has made a direct impact on the daily operations of the Department of Justice Services through his insight and initiative in personally resolving a variety of IT issues and in continuing to devote time to such issues, all of which resulted in the savings of tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars; and whereas in recognition of his efforts, Ray has won the award for 2013; and whereas the County Council is proud to note the contributions made by Ray to the functioning of an important cog of county government and commends his efforts to all, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri, as follows, Section One, the County Council congratulates Ray Barnes on his receipt of the Employee Achievement Award and expresses its hopes for continued success in the future.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number One.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, Resolution Number One, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number One is adopted. Please read Resolution Number Two.
Resolution Number Two, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Page, Wassinger, O'Meara, Dolan, Stanger, and Quinn, resolution, whereas the Employee Achievement Award for Outstanding Contributions to Citizen Services is conferred on an employee who exemplifies public service at its best by acting to improve direct services to the community; and whereas Katrina Summer, Housing Program Manager with the Planning Department's Office of Community Development, is the deserving award winner for 2013, having recognized a significant gap in county services providing to the immigrant and refugee population of our community caused by a lack of information about the availability of county services; and having taken the initiative to cultivate a relationship with the International Institute to disseminate the needed information and develop a brochure concerning available services for translation into several languages; and whereas the County Council is proud to note the contributions made by Katrina to the ability of the county to accommodate the needs of the immigrant and refugee members of the Saint Louis County community and commends her efforts to all, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Saint Louis County, Missouri, as follows, Section One, the County Council congratulates Katrina Summer on her receipt of the Employee Achievement Award and extends its hopes for continued success in the future.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number Two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, Resolution Number Two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number Two is adopted. At this time, we can present the floor.
Yes, Kirk, come forward. Kirk, right here. So, so, yes. S U G. Do you want some help? Thank you. That makes sense a lot. Well, your wife did an outstanding job in here. She gets also a plat that says Employee Achievement Award for Outstanding Contributions to Citizen Services. Citizen Services. This award is presented to Katrina Summer in recognition of her efforts in exemplifying public service at its best during 2013, presented December 2014. Congratulations. And normally, you heard, unless you should get the check, right? Okay. No, mine's right. Yours is right? You want to say anything you want to say for your wife? Does she give you anything to say?
No. She's very proud, happy, kind employee for a long time. She's unfortunately in hospital where she couldn't breathe, so.
Oh. Better get back.
There you go.
She's just a person to be here by.
I don't worry about it.
She's a proud servant of the county.
He's hard. He's not even here. He's not here this time. This way, you want me to do it? There you are. You want me to get the check as well?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, please, that form, please.
Employee Achievement Award for Outstanding Contributions to County Government Operations. This award is presented to Raymond Barnes in recognition of his efforts in accomplishing extraordinary improvements in the efficiency and economy of work processes which have led to cost reductions during 2013, presented December 2014. I'm proud to accept this in writing. He's really gifted in the service to the organization, our department, as well as to the employees. You know, whenever they need anything, Ray is right there and happy to serve them, as well as, you know, a lot of the attorneys he's set up to do things for, so I'm probably accepting it with me.
We have no move to bid opens. We have no bid opens this evening, so we move to communications.
Madam Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening. We move to road bridge matters and resort bridge matters. Item number one, Third District.
Receive file and the streets be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, Third District.
Same motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Sixth District.
Receive file and deposit agreement B for Hawkins Ridge Estates Plat 1 be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Sixth District.
Receive file and deposit agreement B for Hawkins Ridge Estates Plat 3 be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six, Sixth District.
Receive file and deposit agreement B for Hawkins Ridge Estates Plat 3 be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive and file same motion for item number eight, and that will be the order.
Item number nine.
Receive file and the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 11.
Same motion, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Item number 1, Sixth District.
Receive file and the partial replacement deposit agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have one report of special committees.
The Saint Louis County Council met as a committee of the whole on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, to conduct a public hearing to review the report of the Director of Departments of Highways and Traffic Public Works, subject authorization for a change order in the amount of $4 million on the county courts project, Saint Louis County Project Number 12-013-0C, and to review the report of the Director of the Departments of Highways and Traffic Public Works, subject request for release of the $4 million contingency balance, County Courts Project, Saint Louis County Project Number 12-013-0C, Fifth District, 4:40 PM, Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014. I move that we receive file the report, receive and file the report as adopted. As a, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move to the public forum.
Four speakers this evening, Madam Chair.
We have four speakers tonight. Jen will call your name. You have three minutes to speak, and we ask that you keep your comments. Let me just three minutes. Thank you.
First speaker this evening is Frida Keo.
My name is Frida Keo. I'm a Republican Committee Woman for Jefferson Township. Ladies and gentlemen of the County Council, I would like to express my desire that the Bill 241 that is on the agenda not be approved. This is for electronic poll books for the Saint Louis County Council. In the last election in Denver, they started using the poll books. They had major issues. Thousands of people could not vote or had to wait for hours because the poll books didn't work. Also, in the last election, Saint Louis County did a very poor job of running the election. They ran out of paper ballots. They ran out of paper tapes for the machines, so people couldn't vote either on paper ballots or on the machines. I don't think they're equipped to handle a new product when they can't even handle the old equipment or the old process they have. And I just wanted you to know that I don't think it's worth to spend all that money for a system that has not been proven. I also speak from experience. I'm a roving deputy. I visit 20 different polling places in the Kirkwood-Webster-Groves area. I see a lot of problems, and I saw a lot of problems in the last election. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Mark Moore.
So, what happened on the night of 11/24? This is an issue that I have been coming to the grips with, to grips with, with the counselor, with my parents, with my friends and coworkers. I went down there as part of a regular group of protesters that have been there since August 10th. We sat there and we waited for the grand jury announcement to come out. As predicted, we found out exactly why we didn't want Bob McCulloch to be our prosecutor. That said, throughout the night, we were tear gassed, we were shot at, we were blind, deaf, and cold. And all through that, I couldn't imagine with 300 riot cops, at least seven different armored tanks or armored trucks, that still parts of Ferguson were allowed to burn down. There were basically three months between August and 11/24, when police spent $400,000 approximately, training, equipment, needless amounts of propaganda, essentially building up public trust that they could handle this when the decision came down. Not only did they fail, but they failed miserably. From my perspective, there were, from what I saw throughout that night, until I left until about 12:30, there were two armored vehicles at Suburban, basically guarding the trendy area with the coffee shop and the brew house. That's fine. That's property. That's what you got, that's what Charlie Care is all about, is property. That's fine. Unfortunately, property was smashed all throughout South Forest, so you didn't do your job. Now, so there were two tanks down there. There were at least six in front of the police department. After they got done tear gassing us and pushing us up to the farmer's market, we slowly crept back. We're the police, we're 500 police officers and about six different tanks remained for the rest of the night. Now, me and another person, we heard multiple calls over the radio to Lieutenant Lor, who was like standing right across the street from us. We need people in West Forest. We need backup on West Forest. We need backup on the airport. That didn't happen. For about three hours there, those police just sat there and shouted at us, stay out of the street. Five different armored vehicles stood there, doing nothing, not a damn thing, while Airport Road was burning down and West Forest was being shredded. You tell me if it's wrong to think that there's some conspiracy there. You want to blame the governor? That's fine. He has his own issues. But when they have the resources to handle that, just to send two or three squads over there, don't tell me it's the governor's fault. The police had the resources to do that. Instead, they chose to, either through petty pride or hurt feelings from August, they let Ferguson burn down. And I'm not even from Ferguson. I'm from Kirkwood. But it's really beginning to become hard to want to live in this city anymore, when not only are the bureaucrats and the politicians unable to admit that we have problems, and that God knows how many white liberals are unafraid, are too afraid to come out and actually speak on their own principles, but the police department's willing to let an entire neighborhood burn down for the sake of politics. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Scotty Addison.
I have two items to bring up first of all.
I'll take this, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Scotty Addison with PCU Free Assembly Project. I've been here a couple of times on this continuing Ferguson saga. Recall that I brought forward the county's Basic Emergency Operations Plan and Ordinance 701-200 as the policy keys to how this whole situation got escalated from the beginning and the problem of cops controlling public policy on speech. On September 30, I presented two Sunshine Act requests to the County Executive and to the Saint Louis County Police Department to find out what happened that week, how those decisions were made. After a month, I got partial responses. That's the first presentation to the clerk for the record. That's public information. It needs to be on the table. The County Executive Office basically denies they had any documents related to the decisions that were made on the emergency incident game, and that's a plausible answer because responsible civilian officials were left out of the loop by design. This is totally symptomatic of the problem. On November 3, I got an email from the police providing unintelligible, redacted printouts on dispatches right after the killing of Mike Brown, but nothing on the policy and deployment decision made on the protests. And I got a bill for $939.72 for the public information they won't provide. Also conveyed to the clerk for the record is a November 21 letter to Governor Nixon, also sent to the County Executive and to the Mayor of Saint Louis, entitled, quote, "The Perilous State of Emergency." It critiqued the renewed emergency declaration forewarned that this action would escalate tensions again, not calm them. And we watched this prediction come tragically true. It's no small irony that these three officials appeared together on TV, blithely reassuring the public on applied policies in the streets over which they had no control under the Incident Command Scheme. Notwithstanding the lip service to the First Amendment, the cops were running the show, led by the Saint Louis County Police, and they have consistently broken constitutional law. Now we have seen the most militarized response to First Amendment expression in American history, habituating us to repression and mass arrests as a result of this exercise. I will say it once more and again, speech is not supposed to be an emergency in America. And I also would note that I contacted the Ferguson Fire Department to find out if they're involved at all in the investigation of those fires, and they are not. It's being handled entirely by the bomb and arson unit of the Saint Louis County Police Department secretly. I don't think a hand-thrown Molotov cocktail could have landed in the middle of a roof of a big building and set it off in minutes. So this stuff has to be found out about. I want to take one moment to comment on the grand jury movie.
Three minutes, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry?
Just three minutes, sir.
May I have 30 seconds?
Yes.
Thank you. I've done a lot of civil rights investigation. I know about interviewing witnesses to ferret out what they actually saw. The game was pretty transparent, because they let, apparently, all sorts of people come in in the name of inclusiveness to tell their whole stories and let their ramblings and inferences and whatever carry on into the record. And then he used the contradictions to disparage the credibility of all these people, when we know there was no reason for Mike Brown to get shot. And the problem with this grand jury process is not particularly that Bob McCulloch is a problem, but that's another discussion, but a prosecutor, county prosecutor, running these investigations really is a conflict of interest intrinsically. They spend all year, every day backing up the cops in everything they do. How can they possibly do an objective investigation? I got to close this way.
I need you to wrap up, Mr. Addison.
Yeah, thank you. There's been a lot of talk about healing in our region, and what I feel is we need some reckonings. And what comes out of the 24th and 25th of November and those, that tragic time and the destruction that was wrought, take a look at my letter to the governor, because it talks about provocateur tactics and politics in these events. And I'm a veteran of COINTELPRO. I saw that stuff. I have no doubt there are undercover guys on the streets, and this all could have been prevented. So the show's going to go on. The grand jury verdict was just the beginning of a long reckoning for our region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Madam Chair, I would ask if Bill Number 260 be held again. I raised questions about it last week, and the County Executive's office says they're going to provide some information on it, and hopefully they'll do that. Also, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Quinn on his 24 years. I see he has a resolution on him tonight. It doesn't mention, though, I think Councilmember Quinn holds a record for the most no votes ever cast by a councilman, and I don't think anybody will ever break it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Madam Chair.
That will conclude the public forum. Introduction of Bills.
Bill Number 306, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of up to $1,500 from the United States Food and Drug Administration appropriating this aim for support of the FDA voluntary national retail state units for food inspection programs and authorizing the County Executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 307, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with the Regional Health Commission for wellness and prevention efforts. Bill Number 308, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute amendment to a contract with Saint Louis Integrated Health Network for access to electronic exchange of health information. Bill Number 309, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract and one, two-year renewal with Correctional Medical Services Incorporated, DBA Jackson Institutional Dental Services for provision of dental services at the county health centers and the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. Bill Number 310, introduced by Councilmember Erby, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart $376,375 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund in support of staff for the Page Jail Initiative for Departments of Health and Human Services. Bill Number 311, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, an ordinance authorizing the Director of Revenue as trustee to grant a temporary construction license for Metropolitan Saint Louis Sewer District on, over, and under a portion of land acquired at the August 1973 tax sale for construction of a sanitary relief project. Bill Number 312, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, an ordinance limiting the Saint Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R3 Residence District, the FPR3 Flood Plane Residence District, the NU Non-Urban District, and the FPNU Flood Plane Non-Urban as provided herein, PC 21-14, Saint Louis County Planning Commission. Bill Number 313, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance limiting the Saint Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the M1 Industrial District and the R5 Residence District as provided herein, PC 33-14, Saint Louis County Planning Commission. Bill Number 314, introduced by Councilmember Stanger, an ordinance limiting the Saint Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the NU Non-Urban District, the FPNU Flood Plane Non-Urban District, the M3 Plan Industrial District, and the FPM3 Flood Plane Plan Industrial District, and approving the application and preliminary plans for development in the M3 Plan Industrial District and the FPM3 Flood Plane Industrial District of attractive land subject to conditions, PC 32-14, Frisco Hill Autobody. Bill Number 315, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an ordinance limiting the Saint Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the M1 Industrial District and the CA Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans for development and amended development in the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions for appealing ordinance numbers 22,070 and 17,615, PC 34-14, Saint Louis County Planning Commission. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Perfection of bills.
Bill Number Eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 218, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 231, by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
Bill Number 241, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold.
Bill Number 262, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 270, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 271, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 271.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 271 is perfected.
Bill Number 272, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 272.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 273, introduced by Councilmember Erby. I move for perfection of Bill Number 273.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 273 is perfected.
Bill Number 274, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 274.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 275, introduced by Councilmember Erby. I move for perfection of Bill Number 275.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 275 is perfected.
Bill Number 276, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 276.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 273 is perfected.
Bill Number 274, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 274.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 274 is perfected.
Bill Number 275, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 275.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 275 is perfected.
Bill Number 276, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 276.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 276 is perfected.
Bill Number 277, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 277.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 276 is perfected.
Bill Number 277, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 277.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 277 is perfected.
Bill Number 278, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 278.
Second.
All in favor?
reckonings. And what comes out of the 24th and 25th of November and those, that tragic time and the destruction that was wrought, take a look at my letter to the governor because it talks about provocateur tactics and, and politics in these events. And I'm a veteran of coentle pro. I saw that stuff. I have no doubt there are undercover guys on the streets, and this all could have been prevented. So the show's gonna go on. The grand jury verdict was just the beginning of a long reckoning for our region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Madam Chair, I would ask that Bill Number 260 be held again. I raised questions about it last week, and the County Executive's Office says they're going to provide some information on it, and hopefully they'll, they'll do that. Also like to congratulate Councilmember Quinn on his 24 years. I see you have a resolution on him tonight. It doesn't mention, though, I think Councilmember Quinn holds the record for the most no votes ever cast by a councilman, and I don't think anybody will, will ever break it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Madam Chair.
That will conclude the public forum introduction of bills.
Bill Number 306 introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of up to $1,500 from the United States Food and Drug Administration appropriating this stand for support of the FDA voluntary national retail standards for food inspection programs and authorizing the County Executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 307 introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with the Regional Health Commission for wellness and prevention efforts. Bill Number 308 introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute amendment to a contract with St. Louis Integrated Health Network for access to electronic exchange of health information. Bill Number 309 introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract in one, two-year renewal with Correctional Medical Services Incorporated, DBA Jackson Institutional Dental Services for provision of dental services at the county health centers and the Buzz Westfall Justice Center. Bill Number 310 introduced by Councilmember Erby and ordinance appropriating and sending apart $376,000, $376,375 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund in support of staff for the Page Trail Initiative for Departments of Health and Human Services. Bill Number 311 introduced by Councilmember Stanger and ordinance authorizing Director of Revenue as trustee to grant a temporary construction license to the metropolitan St. Louis sewer district on, over, and under a portion of land acquired at the August 1973 tax sale for construction of a sanitary relief project. Bill Number 312 introduced by Councilmember Stanger and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R3 Residence District to the FPR3 Floodplain Residence District, the NU Non-Urban District, and the FPNU Floodplain Non-Urban as provided herein, PC 21-14, St. Louis County Planning Commission. Bill Number 313 introduced by Councilmember Dolan and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the M1 Industrial District and the R5 Residence District as provided herein, PC 33-14, St. Louis County Planning Commission. Bill Number 314 introduced by Councilmember Stanger and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the NU Non-Urban District, the FPNU Floodplain Non-Urban District, the M3 Plan Industrial District, and the FPM3 Floodplain Plan Industrial District, and approving the application and preliminary plans for development in the M3 Plan Industrial District and the FPM3 Floodplain Industrial District of attractive land subject to conditions, PC 32-14, Frisco Hill Autobody. Bill Number 315 introduced by Councilmember Dolan and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the M1 Industrial District and the CA Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans for development and amended development in the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions for appealing ordinance numbers 22,070 and 17,615, PC 34-14, St. Louis County Planning Commission. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill Number 8 introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 218 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 231 introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
Bill Number 241 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold.
Bill Number 262 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 270 introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember Erby.
Hold, please.
Bill Number 271 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move, I move for perfection of Bill Number 271.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 271 is perfected.
Bill Number 272 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 272.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 272 is perfected.
Bill Number 273 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 273.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 273 is perfected.
Bill Number 274 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 274.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 274 is perfected.
Bill Number 275 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 275.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 275 is perfected.
Bill Number 276 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 276.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 276 is perfected.
Bill Number 277 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 277.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 277 is perfected.
Bill Number 278 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 278.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 278 is perfected.
Bill Number 279 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 279.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 279 is perfected.
Bill Number 280 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 280.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 280 is perfected.
Bill Number 281 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 281.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 281 is perfected.
Bill Number 282 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 282.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 282 is perfected.
Bill Number 283 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 283.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 283 is perfected.
Bill Number 284 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 284.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 284 is perfected.
Bill Number 285 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 285.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 285 is perfected.
Bill Number 286 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 286.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 286 is perfected.
Bill Number 287 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 287.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 287 is perfected.
Bill Number 288 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 288.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 288 is perfected.
Bill Number 289 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 289.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 289 is perfected.
Bill Number 290 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 290.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 290 is perfected.
Bill Number 291 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 291.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 291 is perfected.
Bill Number 292 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 292.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 292 is perfected.
Bill Number 293 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 293.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 293 is perfected.
Bill Number 294 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 294.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 294 is perfected.
Bill Number 295 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 295.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 295 is perfected.
Bill Number 296 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 296.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 296 is perfected.
Bill Number 297 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 297.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 297 is perfected.
Bill Number 298 introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I take it up. I move perfection of Bill Number 298.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 298 is perfected.
Bill Number 299 introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 299.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 299 is perfected.
Bill Number 300 introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I take it up. Move for perfection of Bill Number 300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 300 is perfected.
Bill Number 301 introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 301.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 301 is perfected.
Bill Number 302 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 302.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 302 is perfected.
Bill Number 303 introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I take it up. I move perfection of Bill Number 303.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 303 is perfected.
Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 304 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 304.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Substitute Bill Number 1 for Bill Number 304 is perfected.
Bill Number 305 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill Number 305.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 305 is perfected. Final passage of bills.
Madam Chair, there's that motion to suspend the rules.
I move to suspend the rules to take up Bill Number 305 for final passage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The rules are suspended. Please read Bill Number 305 for final passage.
Bill Number 305 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 305.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, Bill Number 305, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 305 is finally passed.
Bill Number 260 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold.
Bill Number 263 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 263.
Madam Chair, I think we referred that to the Pension Board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we did. That has been referred to the Pension Board. We did that on December 2. I move to hold Bill Number 263. Bob, what's the number?
Substitute Number 1 for Bill 69.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like permission to change my vote on substitute Bill Number 1 for 2, for 16, 269?
What? Just 69.
For 69.
Just asking for permission to change your vote from yes to no.
Do we need to change the journal then?
The journal would be changed to reflect it if the council grants permission.
Do we need to go back and change the journal that was approved?
Yeah, the journal was approved, but that, no, that journal doesn't have to be changed. This journal for this meeting would just reflect that the chair's vote was changed.
Wouldn't she have changed it when we approved the journal, though? Because that was in the journal?
Well, no, the journal reflects what happened at that meeting. So at the meeting of December 2, the chair voted yes. And so that journal has to reflect what happened. What she's asking now is for permission to change the vote, and then if the council gave her permission, the journal for tonight's meeting would reflect that she was allowed to change her vote. You, you wouldn't change the journal from the meeting of December 2 because that truly reflects what happened.
Go ahead.
As I recall, the, the vote is reflected in the journal as 7 to nothing.
That is correct.
Okay.
What's, what's the mechanism of changing? Is it motion?
She can, she can just ask for permission to change her vote, and the council can either grant that permission or refuse it.
It's fine.
Okay, so I change my vote to no.
Well, unless, I would say unless there's objection, the chair would be allowed to change her vote.
Does that go to voters? I don't care.
Okay, so now I just move to change my vote to?
Well...
Well, if there's no objection, then you don't need to change.
If there was no objection, you, you are allowed to change your vote, and then tonight's journal will reflect that you changed your vote.
Okay, thank you.
And I might say you're one no vote closer to my record.
Your record's probably still safe.
Thank you, Greg, for noting that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, moving on to the resolutions, we have two additional this evening. Resolution Number 3 introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of Resolution Number 3.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger?
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution Number 3, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number 3 is adopted.
Resolution Number 4 introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger, Erby, Page, O'Meara, Dolan, and Stanger. Madam Chair, may I read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Resolution, whereas Greg Quinn has served the people of St. Louis County and in particular his constituents in the 7th Council District for more than 24 years with great character and integrity, and whereas Councilman Quinn's lifetime in office, or Councilman Quinn's time in office was often notable...